Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Mulder, consultant with.
We're going to go ahead and call the official meeting.
Yes, and then I'll call you right up as soon as we start the meeting. Okay, we'll go ahead here. It is 8:30. Remind anyone in the audience to turn your cell phones off to quiet or silent. And then we'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you stand with us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, and then Chris, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dalby?
Here. Can I get a motion to approve today's agenda, please?
So move.
Same.
Okay, you do the roll call, please, Chris.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes. Okay, Chris? Do you read that number one, please?
Mulder and Associates' Presentation of City Administrator Candidates. Recommendation upon completion of interview panel process with mayor, city council, city department heads, and community panel candidates will be dismissed.
Okay, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bill Mulder of Mulder and Associates. You have the floor.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. We'll start this morning with interviewing Mr. Joseph Gah. You all have received his resume and you have the information about his history, his background. You have the questions that were suggested for you. We'll ask you to, if you ask the same questions to all the candidates. There's no reason to not have follow-up questions if the candidate sells you something that you don't quite understand. Go ahead and follow it up. You don't have to make follow-up questions to all the other candidates. And I'll begin this with introducing Mr. Gah. At 9:15, I'll come and get him.
Morning, Mr. Gah. You have the floor, please.
Good morning. Thank you. Do you want to start with the presentation, or?
Yes, please, if you'd like to. Go ahead.
Good. Well, we were asked to present, prepare a little presentation. I've given you a handout. It's pretty typical of how I summarize events or if we're working on something. But I wanted to share with you just briefly the experience I had when I was the city administrator, city manager, excuse me, in Sheraton, Iowa. I arrived there in March of 2014. And I knew going in that it was a community that had significant financial problems in the past. The best way to put it is just a few years ago, before my arrival, they were flat broke, for lack of a better word. So they had had a changeover in city managers. A finance-centered city manager came in and started making some changes, was there for a couple of years. When I arrived, it was time to start putting things to work. So what I found was that the general fund just three years prior had been about $750,000 in the hole. So there had been a major spending freeze, no capital projects, no equipment purchases, anything for five years. A lot of new funding sources had been tapped and created, but yet nothing had really been spent. And probably the biggest issue in town was that the residential streets, especially asphalt streets, were horrendous. The best way to say it is, it was kind of like running through a maze of potholes about anywhere you wanted to go. So really, I would summarize the community and the staff as having very low morale. There was a significant lack of pride in community beautification, and there were lots of things to do. So my first day was March 3, 2014, and on that night, the city council met and approved the FY 2015 budget. That's important because it's the first time I'd ever seen a budget approved, really with no capital expenditures. Their budget was simply operating. It had looked the same for the last few years. And that was really the blank sheet that I started with. We looked for some low-hanging fruit, so to speak, and started working with the department heads on the equipment replacement plan. Because I'd mentioned, we hadn't, the last thing had been purchased five years before that was a police car and a maintenance pickup. So everything was in pretty bad shape. All the departments had equipment needs. And we started working on how to do that. And we created a plan for vehicles on a three-year plan and capital equipment on a five-year plan. And the reason why that's critical, because that was the first point we brought the staff together, that if we're going to work out of this, we have to have a plan. So if this year, we're going to buy a police car, and then three years from now, are we going to buy another police car? If we buy a maintenance pickup now and it's paid off in three years. And so the departments all worked together to create that plan, and that was laying the framework. And one of the other significant items that we did in that first year, and it started off where I would go to a meeting or somewhere across town, and I would run across another nuisance property, and not a nuisance property that needed a little work or maybe had a little junk in the yard. It was an abandoned house that probably should have been torn down at least 10 years before that. And there were just tons of those littering the town. So I took that on as the most important point, because there's a lot you can do before you have to spend a whole lot of money on nuisance properties. So in 2014, I opened 14 cases. Over half of those ended up in demolition. The other half were repaired and good. Some of them made minor adjustments, and we had to keep working with them in the future, which is fairly typical. And opened about that many in 2015. That was an aggressive load, but we started a process where you send them the letter, they don't respond, you have a public hearing, you have some follow-up there, and you move it to district court. And by the time we got to the budgeting process in 2015 for the 2016 year, we were laying the framework where we needed to put some money aside for capital projects, and we needed to put some money aside for abating nuisances. We're going to have to spend some money. And that's one of the reasons why they had left codes enforcement. So with that fiscal year 2016 budget, we identified that really each year, there's about two or three pots of money. And we prioritized the projects and assigned them to pots of money, and then decided which ones first. And so, of course, residential streets was the most critical, and that's really where we started. And so as of last year, 2019, we started out with a four-year plan. It's become a five-year residential plan. And a six-year, we'll kind of do some major arterial routes, but it's been completed. And the residential streets look much better, and that was where we started and really carried through that plan a number of years and did that. In 2018, when we were doing pretty good on the asphalt streets, we added a chip and seal program. Because quite frankly, there's still a lot of gravel streets remaining, and how to address those. So the streets being the best way to serve citizens, I think, you know, what have you done for me lately? I pay my property taxes. What are you going to do about my street? So that was the main thing. Community redevelopment was also a key. Sheraton had become a Main Street community in 2012. So we did a facade project in 2015 and 16. There was an upper-story housing project done in 2014 and 15. And really saw a lot there and started to lay the groundwork for what's next. One of the things is you start something, you finish it, and what's next? So a streetscape project, and we had planned that early on. It was identified. But as it rolls through, when its time gets in the budget, where it was assigned, it was ready to go. And that's a project going on right now in the planning phases, and we'll kick off. Lots of relationships established, especially with the downtown through the Main Street Iowa and the Economic Development Authority. Another major issue, housing, mostly working with infill. There hadn't been any new subdivisions, and that wasn't, there wasn't a lot of appetite for that. But as we tore down these houses, that did lead to some new housing utilizing TIF as far as incentives. One thing to note, early in the process, in 2014, we did a housing study. It identified two major things. One, the housing stock, 50% of it, over 50%, was built before 1940. So that's a big statistic. I believe Atumwa's got a similar statistic, maybe a little bit more, but it's quite a little bit bigger. And the second thing is you could take a dart and throw it at a dartboard, and you could look at single-family housing, multifamily housing, ownership rental. And it didn't matter what you hit, you could do it. We had major lackings in every area of housing, and so that was identified. And we worked on one project area. We had an infill. It was an old trailer park. And we started with duplexes and tried that, and it didn't really get off the ground. We couldn't find a developer. But working with our Economic Development Authority and our major employers, we were able to launch a single-family and I believe a couple of townhouses in there. And that old trailer court is now, last year, they completed six units. And there was a plan in place that if they don't sell, that the Economic Development Authority has to buy them back. Five of them were already occupied within, before being finished. And the sixth one was went ahead and built as a spec house, but I believe now has sold. So that was great. Those partnerships were critical. And then, of course, infrastructure, the sometimes unattractive part. But we had major infill and inflow and infiltration problems with our sewer. And so we started a process with doing that and setting sides of fun with that. And then really, probably one of the things that wasn't as noticeable to the community, but is important, especially in economic development, is our local airport. And they'd had a 90% funding from an FAA project setting for five years, and they couldn't figure out how to do the 10% match. So that was one thing in those budgeting, in those pots, was how to set aside matching funds for the airport. And not only that project, but two others have now been completed. So that was really a summation of the major things that happened. Some of the takeaways from that is that long-range planning is key to community development. And you can't do anything without a plan, and if you have a plan, you can oftentimes secure outside resources. And you can do more sooner with outside funding. And also, you can't plan it today and do it tomorrow. It takes a lot longer than that. You have to be patient. It was tough having that big of a log of projects and taking them on over a five-year period of time. And it really takes everyone working together on that, and communication is a key. I remember a couple of times in the streets project, every time the asphalt crew would come to town, we'd get a call from somebody not on the project, wondering when theirs was done. Well, once we had that plan laid out, we could tell them, you're in line for next year or for two years. And that really did help. You know, they might have wanted it today, but they understood you were working on it for them, and that was helpful. It, one of the things that I think was a key as well is, if you let it deteriorate for 30 years, it's going to take more than one year to fix it. So again, that patience is critical. My motto is to leave it better than you found it. I think that was definitely the case. There was work to be done. And probably the most satisfying, I've been gone about a year and a half now, and all of the things that we had planned are still continuing. And really, a lot of those plans are at the point where they need to be redeveloped and looked at, and that's what they're doing now. And so it was very satisfying to see that.
Thank you, Mr. Gah. I guess at this time, we'll open it up then for questioning. I only, we got 45 minutes. So I would ask that we move quickly through those, so we have enough time to get as many questions asked as possible. So, Council, this is your time to ask the questions that you would like to, and we'll start with whoever. Yes, one at a time. Yes, absolutely. So would you like to start, Councilmember Burke? Sure, you bet.
All right, good morning. One of the questions that I had, that I wanted to ask is, Atumwa has a diverse and ever-changing population, and wanted to know how you envision or propose making Atumwa specifically how the city government operates to try to make it more inclusive to our ever-changing population.
Yes, that's a great question. Thank you. That was one of the things that I definitely picked up on through the tour and the discussions last night in the community forum, is the changing demographics. And, you know, for a long time, southern Iowa was fairly typical. We were fairly white, we were fairly conservative, and now that's changing, and that's great. And that is somewhat of a, really for city government, especially small-town, you know, rural city government, that is somewhat of a challenge. I think just having that open door, folks come to government for help oftentimes, especially those new to the community. And to really just have that open door policy, working together with all the community groups, I think that community outreach is critical. And having those connections, one of the things with the city administrator position is I believe it's a bridge and a link to a lot of things. And so working with those community organizations and those community groups to address that. And I often say, it's not my job to tell you what we should do. It's my job to ask you what you think and then to try and do that. So working with those groups to make sure we're inclusive, because we might feel we are, they might say we have some work to do. So really working together on those plans.
Councilmember Rowe?
Good morning. Thank you for being here. In any organization, there's naturally going to be siloing, to a certain extent, between various departments. Can you define your leadership style, and can you give an example of how you would bring departments together to work towards a common goal?
I really believe in teamwork and camaraderie. That's critical. And that was one of the things that I've found in a couple of places, especially Sheraton. Sheraton was the place the department heads have never, had never communicated, and there were only a few of them, it was amazingly enough. But they didn't know what each other was doing. And so we implemented lots of processes, especially working through those budget times. In Dickinson, in my current position, we have a pretty sophisticated staff, a pretty big staff, very similar to this one here. And they're very thoughtful and educated and can get their jobs done. And sometimes bringing them together is more of a challenge. And so we have two layers of leadership, I like to call it. One, we call it the exec team. That's my direct reports, the five or six of us. And then we have a leadership team that branches out to about 15 people. And we alternate those. One week, the exec team meets, and one week, the leadership team meets. And that was different. When I got there, every week, the exec team met, and every other week, the leadership team met. But a lot of the exec team didn't go to the leadership team because they'd just met the day before and talked about the same things. So we combined those to make sure everybody's hearing the same type of things, and it's not five or six making decisions or recommendations for all of it. And that's become very critical. Each department head is responsible for getting their items ready for council presentation, and we share those with the leadership team. So really, that togetherness. And then my leadership style is very open. I like to get in the trenches sometimes and not just sit in my office all day long. I like to go meet with the departments where they're working, at their buildings, and get to know them. And just the departments, the employees throughout the organization, knowing who the city administrator is. When I arrived in Dickinson, you didn't see the city administrator unless something bad was happening. And so I've changed that and done a report. I think that that opens up the department heads to make sure they're in tune with their staff as well. So really, that top-down through the organization communication is critical. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely.
And Joe, I don't know if you have, do you have a copy of the questions that we had?
Nope.
Okay, well, this one, let me just start and see what you can do with it. And it may be similar to some of the things you just stated, but one of the questions I thought is important to us is for you to describe your ideal council-city administrator relationship within the context of three things, just what they've listed in there. One of those would be the ideal way for the mayor of council to give you direction. But then, secondly, what would be the ideal role or strategy, role in the strategy and policy development? How would you do that? And then the third one is your relationship with the council when there are differences of opinion. So basically, what do you see is, how do you see working as city administrator with the council?
I think the most important thing is to remember that it's the city council that I work for. So that's very important. But I believe in telling you the truth, no matter where, whether it's something you want to hear or not. I think that's the hardest part of this sometimes, is being able to sometimes bring you bad news. But I do so openly and honestly and tactfully as possible. I think that's always, always important. When we talk about it, there's really, there's two dynamics to council relations. The first one is bringing them information at the formal meetings. And I'm very adamant about that. I love putting out a good council packet and having that information ahead of time. I don't like to surprise you. I don't necessarily like to be surprised. So lots of thorough information in that packet, and then discussions and presentations at those meetings is important. But even beyond that, maybe having some one-on-one discussions, especially if you are developing those types of things where you know, you may be talking to folks that don't absolutely agree and have not come to the same spot yet. And so really presenting the different things, having some one-on-one discussions, just to make sure they're informed or if they do have some questions or concerns ahead of time. Because I think it's critical to remember that the council is the voice of the community. I'm the voice of the staff and the professional development side, but really knowing that the decisions we're asking you to make are going to be reflective and appreciated in the community. That's your role. And so I think having that together is important. So lots of research, lots of discussion. Every Friday, I send an email out to my council of just a little bit of an update. It might be two things. It might be six things. It's usually not very long. But some of the things perhaps I've been working on, some of the things perhaps we're leading up to, and I think that's important. Something else we've implemented are council work sessions. We do that once a month in advance of a commission meeting. And that's for the staff to maybe bring some things that are developing and discuss with the council about, how would you maybe want me to do this? Are these the directions you like? Is this something we should be working on? Or if we bring it up to you, you're going to wonder why we even waste the time to do it? And those work sessions have been very good, because there was some disconnect between the staff and the council. And I think that's my job to do that. And then really, the important part, and this is sometimes hard for staff, is that it's our job to make recommendations and carry out what you bring forth to us. It's not our job to dictate to you exactly what we want. And if you don't give us what we want, that doesn't mean we don't have to do it. We still have to do it. So having that commitment and being able to carry things forward and staying neutral, you know? It's okay that a council doesn't always agree on things. I think that's sometimes better. If it's always a 5-0 vote, it might be a little suspicious sometimes that the decisions were made ahead of time. So good discussion and debate, that's part of an effective team. And I think it's important for the council to be an effective team, for the staff to be an effective team. So it's okay to bring you things, and I like to bring options, maybe not just this is the only way we can do it, but let's look at some options and really let you make those decisions.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
Go ahead. Who you got?
We've all gone except for me and you.
Go ahead.
Okay. I like your last comment there, Mr. Gah, about voice of the staff, counseling the voice of the community, and I'll go off that for my question. My question revolves around communication with the public and how city communicates with folks in the community. And one thing I've seen over my time on the council is, we don't do a very good job of that here. We try, and we try and we fail time and time again, and we do good in some instances. But the part that I think we fail the most in is the very simple issues that people have the most question about. And I find that it doesn't take a lot of communication. People just simply want to know, you know, things about issues that we pass. And when an issue arises that's very contentious, there's certain things that we know in city government that we can't talk about and can't discuss. The law is very clear on things that we can't discuss. There's legal issues that our city attorney will tell us that we can't discuss, and we know that. But there's other things around a topic like that that we can discuss. There are details that we can get out to the public that they can, you know, kind of get a picture in a sense of what's going on. I think staff here, many times, is very overlooked, very overworked, and doesn't have the time really to dedicate to a lot of, you know, writing and getting, you know, interviews and things out. How would you go about, when an issue comes about that people want to know what's going on, how would you go about communicating with the public? Would you say, do interviews with, you know, the news agencies, say, you know, for instance, the Courier, the various Atumwa radios, you know, those types of things? Would you try to get ahead of those issues before they become big community, you know, things that become negative in our community? Because we face a lot of negativity in our community. How would you go about doing that? And are you open to doing that, to keep that stuff from becoming negative in our community? That's important to this community.
It is. It's important to every community, and that's a big question. Let's tear it down into some things. I think I tend to be, in my media communications, I'm a traditionalist, I believe. It's great to see the things published in the paper that happen at council meetings. Everywhere I've been as a city administrator, I always met with the paper after the council meetings and went over what did happen. And that usually leads to several little stories, not just one big story. So really making sure they have that information. I've always had very positive relationships with the local papers because of that. One of the things that I sometimes think gets a little bit lost is radio, and I still think that's a great one. When I was in Sheraton, every week, I'd get a call, or after every commission meeting, I'd get a call from Tom at the radio station in Albia, and he'd go over what happened in the commission meeting. And then I'd be out somewhere, and somebody'd say, hey, I heard you on the radio today. And so that was a great way, because some people are driving and they hear that. Television, of course, is very important. We were joking this morning, there was the newspaper and the television. We were at the meet and greet last night, and we were on the nine o'clock news. So that's important, and I'm not shy about any of that. I think it's very important and good relationships. Those administrators that refuse to discuss things with the media are usually those that get in trouble later on because you've upset the media. It's good to be friends. We have a job to do, and they have a job to do, and it's important to be together as much as possible. And then there's this ever-growing social media, and that's something that sometimes people are very demanding to know things upfront. I have found that some of the simple things, like, hey, it snowed last night. We're going to start plowing the streets. How about, let's not park on the emergency snow routes, or we're going to start in a couple of hours. Go ahead and get your cars moved off, and those sort of things. That is excellent. That's the little stuff like that. Also, some of the big things come from that. But also, I think it's important, we had an incident the other day, that it's a personnel issue. You really can't discuss much, but the folks that seemed to have an issue didn't have a problem talking to the newspaper. So it was fairly one-sided, published, and that's understandable, and we'll prepare for that later on. But I told my police chief, he called me and he was rather upset, I said, read the comments. The comments were supportive of the, it was a police department issue with the police department, and somewhat critical of the person that was saying they were perhaps a victim of this. And then one of the statements was even saying, I was there, and that's not what happened. So utilize that social media sometimes to an advantage. It can get to be such a negative. But we post little things all the time on that. And probably one of the best things is to be active out in the community. I attend lots of community meetings. One of the best things about Dickinson is there's a fundraising event, at least one fundraising event, about every weekend from January through April, before it gets warm enough to do anything. And being out at those, that's how you get connected. Because sometimes, when things get bad, you need to have friends to stand behind you. And those are the types of events that you gain those friends and that support network. And it's important to know that, and working with your partner agency. So lots of attention. Again, that's part of the bridge and the link. It's the link with the community. Sometimes if something does come out, maybe everybody doesn't jump on the bandwagon so quickly. So it's important. But then we must remember that we may have the best communication systems in the world. We may be open. We may think we're great, and we may be great, but there's still some people that might live under a rock. They may never listen to the radio. They may never listen to the, read the newspaper, watch television, or be on social media. And when they hear something that maybe has been covered extensively by the media and gone through several council meetings, and they'll say, I didn't know that was happening. We have to understand that that's going to happen. We just have to, at the end of the day, feel like we've done a good job communicating, and that takes a lot of networks and a lot of work. And quite frankly, it's the part I like. Whenever I arrived in Dickinson, they were talking about hiring a public information officer to bring all the media to one centralized place and not letting the department heads talk about things going on. And I was against that. I said, you know, I can do the major things, but if those department heads have that connectivity to the community, that's a good thing, too. And so we share those duties. If they want to talk about snow removal, go talk to the street superintendent. You don't need to come in and talk to me about something I'm not directly involved in. And that builds some pride amongst the staff, too, having those opportunities. So lots of work, but it's great work.
Excellent question, or answer. And then one thing I just wanted to leave you with, I think, just an opinion of mine, and I'll move on to Councilman Stevens, so he has time, is that one thing I've seen is that a little negativity to a city administrator, you know, we've seen in the past where that turns into anger, and then they seem to want to just not respond, and that will damage a city administrator in this town very quickly. And I do not want to see that happen going forward, so I just drop you that thought. So very good answer. I appreciate that.
Just a little follow-up to that. It's a great thing. You have to remember that probably about 50% of the time, no matter what decision you're going to, about half the people may like you, and about half the people may not like the decision. And that changes. It's not always the same people. So you just have to balance with that, and that's part of it.
Absolutely. Councilman Stevens, do you have a question?
Okay. I guess I would like to know, and it's in your resume, if I remember correctly, the reason for leaving your current position and wanting to come to Atumwa?
I'm going to hit that a couple of different directions. One, I guess, kind of a long thing, and I don't know if there's a question about what my career path is, but we'll just sum it up, and if it is, we'll answer that. But I'm somewhat weird in public administration, in that I have a public administration bachelor's degree and wanted to be a city administrator from the very beginning. And so I, much like many people, I earned my bachelor's degree and then worked in other fields besides city management for the first several years. Higher education, nonprofit management. Along the way, got a master's degree in parks and recreation. So that led to some teaching at the higher ed level, and then gradually to a parks administrator in Sebastian County, Arkansas. While I was there, I was mentored by a county administrator who asked me one day, what'd you want to be when you got a public administration degree? I said, I wanted to be a city administrator. So he said, I can work with you. So he said, I can work with you and teach you lots of things you need to do. So besides being a parks administrator, I was learned about human resources and IT and how to work with elected officials when there's 13 of them on the board and they're elected by district and partisanship. And so that nobody ever agrees on anything, how to work through those types of of communications. And I came out, when I was ready to to look at city administrator jobs, I started looking small, about communities of 1,500. And there were lots of those in Iowa and Kansas. And my coworkers at the time said, well, you could go to a town of 25,000 right now. I'm like, oh, no, I'm not at all ready for that. I don't want to do that. You know, 25,000, I want to end up there, but that'll be later in my career. And so I went to Woodbine, Iowa, population 1,500, spent about three and a half years there. I had a great experience, a Main Street community, just going gangbusters. And then moved on to Sheraton, where I was for almost five years, a town of 4,500. And quite frankly, when I left Sheraton, it was a surprise. I had just bought another house. I'm kind of a rehab addict. So I just bought another house month, two months before I announced I was leaving and had it a small apartment building I was rehabbing, so it was a surprise. And it wasn't that I woke up one day and said, I'd like to move to North Dakota. That sounds like a dream. It really wasn't. And I ended up moving somewhat oddly, I would say, in that the position description came out. We get lots of these. And I saw Dickinson, North Dakota, and ignored it. A few days before the deadline, it came out again. And I read it and I said, wow, a town of 25,000, that's actually where I'd want to go. If that was in Iowa, I'd be fighting tooth and nail for that. But I'm not interested because I'm not leaving Iowa. I'm very happy here. I was in my ninth year as an administrator in Iowa at the time. And so then, a couple days after the the deadline, I got it again. This consultant sent it to me again and said, we're still looking for a few applicants. So I looked at it and I said, you know, this is there's some really good things going on in this community. And this is the type of community I want to live in, but it's not in Iowa. And so I said to myself, you know, at that time, I was 44 years old. If I go and spend a few years, you know, getting some experience, and then when a community in Iowa opens up, I'll I'll be ready to come back. Because I'm very, I'm very stair step in my career process, but sometimes you have to take a little bit of risk. And this was was a perfect job. And I did the math, there's about eight communities in Iowa of about 25,000, and over half of those had had new administrators in about the past three years. So there were too many that were going to open up, and it was going to be a few years, it looked like. And the Atumwa, quite frankly, was on my radar. So I decided to take the risk and go. And this is after I had interviewed and was offered the position. And it's been great. I'll tell you what, there's a lot of growth experience between a smaller community and a large community. And there's a lot of adjustments to make. And I've made those adjustments. And so when a Atumwa came up, it was just, I mean, I mean, quite frankly, this is an opportunity to come home. Still have many close friends in the area, my family's not too far away, and Dickinson, North Dakota, was a little bit too rough. So so this really is a place I wanted to be and I planned it that way. There has been a little bit of difficulty in Dickinson, quite frankly. Wonderful community, doing great things. Tension, there's been a lot of change in the city council, they're called a commission there, and the mayor and how they do their job. And that has really, really altered the ability for the executive staff to do their jobs. And and I knew going in there, there was some tension. It's been a little bit tough. And there's been some proposals made that kind of changed the role of the city administrator and the staff. And so that was the reason why I started to initially look. So I was I was looking a little bit. And and the best way I can say it, when the position profile for Atumwa came out, I was giddy. It was it was very exciting. This is why I came here, and this is a perfect time to to think about going back. And like I said, I knew this community. And so all of those together, why Atumwa's attractive, why I like Dickinson, but why I want to want to come back home.
Thank you.
Okay, I would take this opportunity to remind council to remember your questions for the next candidate also, so we ask the same questions. And then if there are any follow up questions at this point on questions that have already been asked, I think Councilmember Row had one follow up question. Go ahead, Mark.
So I would like to follow up on on the question that was just asked of you. And I know that this is kind of a looking glass question, but given the transitions that you had, and you had, you say you have a very particular vision in mind for what your career wants to look like. If if everything's perfect about this job, your performance is perfect, the the atmosphere is perfect, do you, looking back at your career thus far, do you intend to use, do you intend to make Atumwa home? Or do you intend to use this as a stepping stone to something better five years down the line?
Yeah. That's a that's a great question and kind of alluded to it a little bit, and I'll I'll jump into a little bit more. This is if one time in an interview, I had a position profile or a personality profile. One of the things is it says I tend to overanalyze. And and that's that can sometimes be true. And I think for the most part, I embrace that as a as a positive more so than a negative. But but yes, I knew that I wanted to start small and work a little bit bigger. And I say that 20 to 25,000 number because I, when I got this vision to be a city administrator, I'd never left my hometown yet. I went to school there, worked there for a number of years, and it's 10 to 12,000 people. So to me, 25,000 was a really big city. And I didn't, you know, when I was saying I'd go to a town of 20 to 25,000, I mean this honestly, I don't have a vision beyond that. Still don't, having having worked in in these these communities now in the state. And that was one of the reasons why, when Dickinson came up, it was it was a good opportunity because it was where I wanted to end up, quite frankly. But yet, city administrators don't think about that. This is a tumultuous profession sometimes. And if I retire at age 62, that's that's 16 years. So for me to say I'm going to make it to retirement seems tough to say, quite frankly. But I don't know, if you if you wanted to know what my five-year job is, I'd have to say it's Atumwa because I don't have a vision beyond that. And I can tell you that I've been very comfortable in in Dickinson. It's interesting, we've said it a little bit, when you don't have to drive an hour to go to Menards, that's that's a happy place for me as a as a home improvement guy. And if you ever need anything in Menards and you can't find anybody, just ask me, I'll tell you. I know the store. Great. And so this is a community that I'm very comfortable in, the size of community. And I don't need anything bigger. And with that, I would say that I have to work really hard to make sure everything goes right for a number of years. And so that's that's a little little different motivation than what you might see sometimes.
Thank you. Sure. Councilman Myers.
Yeah, I'm sorry to rush things.
No, you're fine. Good.
So you've probably heard, we may have some challenges in our budget this year and next year. What would be keys, do you think, Joe, in you working with us to establish good budgeting practice?
I'll tell you, that was one of the things that was kind of a negative about the timing of this job is by the time I would get here, you'll have your budget done. I absolutely love the annual budget process, and people look at me like I'm crazy. Maybe I am. But I think it's so important to the city, its future health and its future direction. I think that's really critical. But similar, I arrived in Sheraton and we spent a year looking at the budget issues. We weren't rushed with a budget plan and how to make some changes in our budget in the future. And so I look at that. That would be the same case here, as we have some time. You have a new finance director, she's she's got those fresh eyes in looking at it. For me to arrive as the new administrator and jump right into that, I think one of the things with my experience, I am ready to jump into that. I can hit the ground running and looking at those finances and those those tough situations. And I like that. That's something that I thrive on. It's sometimes okay to be at a rough place and work your way out of it, rather than always riding on cloud nine and never having any challenges at all. So so those those budget, working through those budget woes is is something that I take very seriously. Probably the most important thing is to remember, it's not my money. It's somebody else's money that we're doing things with. And so to do that responsibly and using that as a guiding light on any anything we do finance wise is critical.
Okay, we have about five minutes left in this round. Mr. Interim City Administrator, do you have anything?
Thank you, Matt. Joe, I'd like to ask, since you are an experienced administrator and we sent you the profiles and you've been looking at city information, what are the first couple of things you would do in looking at our economic development issue? We hear a lot of people talk about economic development. And it seems to me that this is something that we have to get going on. We've been talking and talking and talking. What would be the one, two or three steps that you would take immediately, not not after six months, but immediately? Because with your experience and background, I think, and you said it, you've got to hit the ground running.
That's a great question. Because really, if you look at economic development, that's something that's evolved that a city used to really not be that directly involved in. There were economic development authorities, and that was kind of an outside thing, and we didn't have to worry about it. But it's become such a frontline issue. And really, I think the important thing first is to define what is economic development. It used to be simply business recruitment. Let's go out and recruit that 300-person employer and everything's going to be fine. Well, then 10 years later, when the tax breaks are gone, they leave you with this big empty building and lots of unemployment, and what do you do? And so we've we've seen several of those scenarios where sometimes that big employer's not going to come back, but several smaller ones will. And so working on those those smaller folks, sometimes supplemental businesses to the bigger businesses is real important. And so working with your local manufacturers and major employers and know what they need, I think that's critical. Because that was maybe a part that we missed, is we didn't talk to the folks that were already here. We were only talking to the folks that we wanted to get here. We might not have known that the people that were here were really struggling, and we could have worked through some struggles with them. Instead, we were just focused on what was next. So so having that balance of recruitment and retention is is very critical. And then there are some things I think the city can be more involved in that are, used to be, maybe there were economic development, but we're finding out now they're very critical. And that's housing and and quality of life. And quality of life means several things. In particular, we used to think it was parks and recreation, and it is a big part of it. But schools, and really, what do people do outside of work, those types of things. Continuing the trail system, I think you have a great opportunity here with the river and at least part of the river. I'm a I'm a kayaker. So so adding those things, especially with the younger generation, they don't want to, they want to work and go home and do something. And so what do you have for them to do, those those quality of life initiatives and how they recruit them? They want to live in a little bit different type of housing than than what we might have in in rural Iowa. So so addressing those issues is very critical. And one of the things that I think is probably the most beneficial, having spent some time in a similar sized city, is we also in Dickinson have a mall that's that's a little dated and and has some major vacancies in it. And with that, we're working on how to to work through some issues at our mall and as well. Another development popped up west of town, very similar to one you have, that's where the Menards is. There's another shopping center going next to that. And that that one is proposed to have a TJ Maxx, a Hobby Lobby, a Dollar Tree and a shoe store, most of what you have here. But the people just go crazy when they hear that. That's what the citizens want. So working with those folks, we're going to put in a street for them because it's totally undeveloped area. That was new for the city of Dickinson. So working through those things. And then one of the things we're doing right now is developing a community profile that we can utilize and farm out for looking for stores for our vacancies. And there's there's different national organizations to work on that and national consultants. And I know, talking to the mayor last night, you've done some of that work and continuing that. So I do think that, just jumping right in, having experience in Main Street communities, getting right in and working with that organization is is going to be important and in your local economic developments. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, you know, bringing folks to town on the tourism side, that all all somewhat fits into the economic development piece. And I think one of the things in a city this size, when you have department heads handling a lot of the operations, those outreach types of things is what the city administrator should be focusing on. And I would look forward to that and immediately get right into that.
Matt, if I might just.
Absolutely.
One more question real quick.
Sure.
Because, Joe, I think you know we have five bargaining units in the the city. And so what's your experience with working with unions and specifically with our budget constraints? We're looking at cross-training staff and and what's your philosophy on that?
I think the more a person can do, the more marketable they are, the more valuable they are, both to us within the organization and to themselves. Back a little bit, bargaining units, I actually, when we we could talk a little bit about it, but we we had a, in Woodbine, a bargaining unit formed right after I got there. There was a lot of changes going on, and it was a very small bargaining unit. So I got to work through that first agreement and working through several of those issues in my first term, first couple of years as an administrator. So have that experience. In Sheraton, we had a bargaining unit for the Public Works and worked through a couple of renovations of that agreement and working on those things. In Dickinson, North Dakota's not a very, it's not a very union-friendly or union-relevant state, so to speak.